Do I have a motion? Second, any discussion, February 23rd? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next up is, um, meeting minutes for March 9th. Do I have a motion to approve? So, move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next up is March 23rd, 2015. Minutes for approval. Do I have a motion?
So move.
I'll second.
Okay, have a first and second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, next up is public hearings, uh, conceptual reviews and briefings. Uh, we have a public hearing for Talafaro on Plains Road subdivision. Anybody wish to make a comment? Make a motion to open it?
No, to open it.
To open it, okay. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Make a motion.
Okay, all in favor? Uh, we have a continuing public hearing for LP builders. Are we on the calendar? Tell them, for them, LP builders. Are they on the calendar or off?
Well, they requested, um, continuation of their public hearing to the May 11th meeting, so I guess...
Okay, so, so they're off then.
We have a motion to...
Just move to, uh, continue hearing until...
Continue hearing until...
Okay, make a motion to, I make a motion to, uh, continue hearing to May 11th they want to be? Kelly, did you say May 11th?
Yes.
May 11th, okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, at this time...
We think that your intention to keep the public hearing on Talafaro open until the, uh, we do have a plan to take place?
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate. So we'll keep the public hearing for Talafaro open until after we review our application. Okay, at this time, we usually have a, uh, 15 minutes for public comment on any issues other than public hearing that's open. Anybody wish to comment? Come on out or state your name and...
I stand here?
You can sit, stand, put it in your mouth.
And I can hear that.
Okay. Is that my quote? I'm not sure if that is...
No, I'll see if I can...
Oh, Mike.
I can talk. I went to the, my name is Julie Willis, and I went to the last planning board meeting because I heard of a plan to create a, to have a CBS and a, uh, Five Guys restaurant by the corner of North Putt and, uh, 299th. And I would like to, I decided I would start asking people if they felt the same way because I, for many reasons, I feel like it's not a good plan. And I started a petition online and in three days, less than three days, uh, there were a hundred and, and about 165 supporters. And also, I talked to people in town and got signatures from people in town, um, and there are about 15 of those. So I'd like to present their, their comments, you know, off to them to you and see if, uh, that might, you know, make a difference in how the plan, whether or not the plan is, goes forward.
You get to read them or...
Um, would, would you like me, I don't know how much time I have?
Well, usually we do about three, three or four minutes.
Okay, well, um, I'd like to...
If they're duplicates, you can just submit them and get them.
Yeah, I will, if, if, if it's, uh, is all right, I will just read. The petition read as follows. Uh, I started, field heading has stopped CBS and Five Guys. And, uh, the first reason that I propose is that we need to support locally owned businesses, change towards harm local businesses. Uh, the second is to exacerbate traffic problems. The plan is to change the intersection of 299 and North Putt and cars will no longer be able to bypass the light and Main Street by turning on north, onto North Putt. And already cars can be lined up to the throughway entrance, and this will happen more often. Also, since the exit from CBS is on North Putt, there would be a significant increase in southbound traffic waiting at the light to get onto 299. The developers say that the traffic light will be adjusted and it's likely that due to the increased traffic on North Putt, that will, more time will be given to cars getting back onto 299 and that will further back up traffic on Main Street. Um, personally, I've had an accident on Main Street because of an impatient, you know, driver who, and my night hasn't been the same, so it speaks to me. Traffic on Main Street is a huge problem and this is something that many people have picked up on in their comments in the petition. Uh, the last point I've raised was that the plan reduces open space and dramatically changes the character of the entrance to New Falls. Uh, the woods at this intersection serve to maintain a look, a place that values natural surroundings. No woods will be preserved, at least not at the, uh, where you're passing by as you drive past. Um, so, those are the main points. Um, some, that was probably enough time, I'm sure.
Okay, uh, you can submit written comments to Kelly.
So I have the, there are comments, there are pages of comments and there are pages of signatures. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next.
Hi, I'm Michael Zeiler from the Village of New Falls. Um, I just want to second what Julie said, um, Simon, I strongly support, um, a careful review of this project, um, or these projects. Uh, I don't, I haven't had a chance to look, I don't know if the material is up on the website. The planning board has put up the plans and I have not followed this closely, so I don't even know if any EIS required for this or not, but if there is ice on that, it's up there. And the second point which may be addressed is, I'm also members of the Village Planning Board. And you have an application in front of you tonight that requires review and decision by both planning boards. Um, it's on Huguenot Street, it's a two lot subdivision. And I'll bring this up now, um, but through reconsideration, it might be advantageous if we could, uh, review that project jointly at some point. If the applicant is willing to report that in a later type of deal. So we can make our decisions at the same time because either of our decisions is contingent on one another or also mean to a, um, in either case, we can end up with something that's not useful. So, thank you.
I'll give you a little statement. So, um, I'm Fran Wishnick. I'd also like to speak about the CBS and Five Guys project, but I'd like to speak about it in broader terms. Um, back when the SOWU discussions started for South Putt, I was, um, one of the people who started reading a lot of older documents. And, um, and there is a 1994 draft GEIS for the Putt corridor. And there is a 1995 final, um, GEIS. Now, that 1995 final is, is in the hands of the supervisor's office. I've been trying to get it available to you and to the public because it speaks a lot to, um, peak traffic along the Putt corridor, which includes that intersection, um, where the proposed CBS and Five Guys is. It also speaks to, um, environmental measures that need to be taken. It's a 1995 adopted final, um, GEIS for the Putt corridor. And I, I really think that the planning board should have it and, and read it and, um, and take it into account for not only this project, but anything that happens along the Putt corridor.
Thank you. Anyone else? For our application review, I'd like to change the order a little bit just to get rid of some of the quicker applications. First off, I'd like to do, Puyamiru. Elliot's lane, can I say that first? Okay. I can do that first. There's some of these, you know, brainwash, like trying to turn things... They're not here, they don't have to be here?
No, because it's just, uh, we're at the gate and we're just, have to make a decision.
What do we have to do for that?
Just approve it.
Just approve it.
Proof of final authorized, chairman, to sign it on sole condition.
So, need a motion to approve, here. Puyamiru, clearing grade and permit. So... Is to approve clearing and grade and permit for their property's...
Oh, yeah.
I went out and walked the site and looked at the wetland flagging and it's good, it's about 1.3 acres. There's a piece of it that's in the buffer and the DEC wants them not to cut trees over 4 inches, but they're interested in keeping those trees for the donkey's days.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Conditional approval?
Subject to they not cut trees, it's a good one.
Okay, so it's, it's a motion for conditional approval, subject to the DEC requirement not to cut trees over six inches.
Right.
And, uh, stay out of the buffer or are they okay with that?
They're okay with the buffer as long as they don't cut trees more than six inches.
Anybody still good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Jewett subdivision, Huguenot Street?
Green, maybe?
Green, maybe?
Um, before we get started, I wanted to introduce Dakota and Mira Miller. They are the contract, um, purchasers for the property. So, they're here to answer any questions that you may have had regarding the, um, the application and the disposition of the land. Um, the application for the board is a two lot subdivision of 104.98 acre parcel of land located on the westerly side of Huguenot Street. Some of you are familiar with it. Um, let's say, Peter, you made the motion to grant the meg dep back in November of 2008 for this project. So this is a, uh, this is Huguenot Street revisited.
Can I just say, if you did want to review this jointly with the village, should we wait on all of this or should we go through this and then...
Well, I guess it, it certainly can be reviewed jointly with the village and, and I encourage the collaboration because it's got to happen anyway. But we're still going to need to have one of the agencies, I believe, and I, and I look to the guidance of the professional consultants, um, to declare lead agency status. And, is that correct?
Yeah, circulate ultimately.
So, this evening, um, what I would hope to do is to outline for this board, um, what the proposal is. And, um, this board previously was lead agent on the project since, um, the undeveloped property is in the town of New Falls. And at that point in time, it had been determined by both the village and the town that the town was best suited to be lead agent. I was hoping, you know, to move the process along this evening to have this board declare the intent to be lead agent and circulate the measure of intent so that we could go to the next step. And then certainly, if we have collaborative meetings, that would be wonderful and, and potentially could streamline the process. But, um, you know, again, correct me if I'm wrong Dave, but I thought that that would be the first step that we would need to take this evening to move the project forward.
I think, um, we can do that, right? You just give us an update, summarize so that we know what we're talking about?
Absolutely.
But we probably won't take any action until...
Declare intent to be lead agent. So, again, it's a two lot subdivision of 104.98 acres. The property is currently encumbered by a conservation easement, which we supplied a copy of to the board. The proposal is to separate out a 10.47 acre parcel of land with the existing dwelling unit and associated, um, agricultural appurtenances. That property is primarily going to remain in the village of New Falls and there will be no change on that. We are proposing to, um, create a 100 foot wide, which is the minimum road fund requirement in the village of New Falls, parcel of land to access the remaining 94.51 acres, which Mira and Dakota will be purchasing for their agricultural operations. It is identical to the, uh, the presentation, the proposal that was approved by both the village and the town back in 2008. In addition to appearing before this board, we also need to go before the town of New Falls zoning board appeals. We had received an area variance back in 2008 because it's a technicality that there is no road frontage in the town of New Falls. So technically, this board would be required, would be approving a lot that has no road frontage in the town. So, as a technicality, it required, um, an area variance. I was hopeful that the area variance would carry through since they generally run with the land. However, there was a condition on the area variance that it was conditional upon, um, finalization of the subdivision. And since the subdivision was never filed with the county clerk, we now also need to go back to the zoning board of appeals. So, our, the boards that we're dealing with are the town of New Falls Planning Board, the village of New Falls Planning Board, and the town of New Falls zoning board of appeals.
What kind of farming, side curiosity, are you planning on?
It'll be a mixed organic vegetable operation, um, as long as, as well as, uh, some chickens.
Don't call it Huguenot Street farm.
I'm sorry.
Don't call it Huguenot Street farm, just kidding.
It'll be a CSA.
Um, no, it, it would be, um, for mostly retail sales down in New York City, uh, through the green markets.
Do you want to talk a little bit about the operation that you have right now? This is not a new startup company, so...
Yeah, so we're...
So established.
We're co-owners and operators of Row By Row Farm, um, LLC. We currently, um, are working with the Talafaro family actually, um, and, uh, growing mixed organic vegetables and, um, bringing them down to New York City to sell them mostly retail, um, at One Farmer's Market, as well as a small CSA group and, um, some restaurant, uh, wholesale accounts.
And we started our business in Columbia County, um, but moved to New Falls because this is the town that we want to live in, um, and farm in.
I thought you'd like to hear that. Thank you.
So wait, how much is the farm? I know you just said that, but how big is the...
94.5.
I mean, are you going to be farming all of that or...
Not, not at first. Um, we'll be rotating cover crops, um, with, we'll probably grow, excuse me, grow to a 30 acre vegetable operation and, um, our, our laying hens are also pasture raised on, in movable coops.
Where is the house that... That's the current farm house, that farm house?
Yes, yep.
That is the biggest access, is one of the biggest...
Do your residents also live there?
No, they're not going to live there.
There's not, but there is, uh, it's, you know, not allowed to be developed residentially at all.
Well, I just, can we just back up a moment? When the Two Farms project happened, there was a, there was a, a single family site on this map, okay? It was over here in the corner, okay? And I, and I noticed that you have taken it off. And if you don't want to do that, that's fine. But my question is, where does that leave them in the future if five years down the road, you decide you really want to live on the farm?
At the point in time that we had done the first presentation, I believe that there were negotiations with the Cozla Farm to swap their building envelope for residential structure. Right now, there is no residential structure permitted, um, the remainder of this land, and they would be purchasing it with that full knowledge. It's part of the conservation easement, has nothing to do with the zoning. They, they had worked, um, with the Cozla Farm, which is obviously now Huguenot Street Farm partners, to relocate that. And, you know, that's, at this point in time, not on the table. But they would have to get a waiver from that, um, conservation easement to be able to get a residential lot on that. And then if they did, if the board deemed it would be, um, you know, if we put a restriction on this right now, that only agricultural buildings could be placed on that, then they would need to come back to the planning board in the future if any residential structure ever wanted to be proposed on it.
And is that the intention to, to add that, to say no buildings other than residential buildings on this place?
Or agricultural.
I mean agricultural buildings?
It would have to be at this point.
Would you agree to that?
I mean, it would have to be at this point because the conservation easement would prohibit it.
So, currently you don't come with 10 acres, right?
We don't, Heidi, you, there she is.
My own's all.
So if you have any specific questions for Heidi, I, I didn't invite her up to see...
It's a little rowing briefcase.
Looks like note 11 there on your plan, Patty, maybe to be revised.
We searched it to agricultural use only with a total aggregate building footprint, that's a 6,000 square feet, no individual building, 3,000. What would...
Oh, okay, I see.
So total aggregate agricultural buildings are 6,000, but no one building could be more than 3,000 square feet.
Right, and exclusive of residential?
Correct, because it says agricultural use only.
Okay.
And that is in actual, like, note 11.
Are agricultural dormitories considered residential? Or that doesn't, you know, sometimes, for workers?
It's called some farm over housing?
Yes, thank you.
That's a good question.
It's a good question. I, I'll have to go back and read the conservation easement, I think.
Yeah, I think it's...
Yeah, they're thinking not, not their attention.
So, in the discussions with the land, in the discussions with the land trust, um, we did speak about that. And these buildings are specifically for agricultural purposes and none of them will be, um, for workers. And we do not plan to develop any worker housing on the property.
No habitable structure.
If you wanted to, you'd have to come back to the board anyway.
Okay, okay. It, it is in our intent and it's not what, you know, we agreed with the land trust, so...
So, so the plan when the farm gets started is, that no one's going to physically live on that block?
Right.
Farm, employees are going to come from someplace else?
Yeah.
Yes.
We, yeah, we are currently, um, renting an apartment that's about a mile away from the farm. So, that, our plan is to continue to do that until we, um, either work something out, um, in the future with Huguenot Street Farm or, um, find other permanent housing.
Okay, uh, I think now we need a, um, motion to declare, uh, town of New Falls planning board as lead agency. And then, uh, a lot of this stuff will be further discussed when we have a joint meeting with the village and...
Great, yeah, I think, I think that's an awesome idea and certainly will streamline the process and get everybody at the table to think about it.
Do I have a motion?
So, just to circulate also a while. Would it, it's to circulate the lead agency?
Circulate.
Be a coordinated review.
Motion to circulate for lead agency.
I'll get everything to...
No, we don't, it's lead agency and circulate. And circulate the motion.
If I could send the two of you or just Dave and the, um, my suggested list to make sure that you approve it before we do the circulation, I would appreciate that.
Further discussion? All in favor? Or am I?
So Kelly, I'll, um, get with Dave and Joe and make sure that I have the correct circulation list and then, um, get with you. The, oops, I'm sorry. The village line is this black line right here. So, from here forward, it sort of splits the coop.
So the house, that this, most of the 10 acres is in the village?
The majority of it's in the village, yes. And will you get that to me when you've, um, come up with a date for the joint meeting with the village or...
Yeah, keep it in voice.
Okay, wonderful. All right, thank you. Any other questions before we...
Kelly, I have comments, early comments.
I'll do, great, great. Thank you very much. Good? Okay. Thank you. Oh, I got a sign that's on. Oh, whatever. We didn't catch it this time, we'll catch it the next time. Thank you very much.
Do you stay for, uh, Monday or...
I'm out.
I think.
Hopefully this one's easy for you.
Well, we're kidding, you have to go.
I know, but just in case. Never easy.
Okay, uh, we had a simplified site plan. Should change some offices around, you can say, the building?
So it's all interior?
In a way, uh, from the original submission.
Yeah, yes. No changes to the landscape?
Correct, correct.
No more skyline?
No.
Okay. You did a review, right?
Yes.
We made a recommendation for approval of the simplified site plan.
Did we talk about this last time? Didn't we talk about this last time?
We did, but we ended up getting Dave's...
Oh, right.
So, uh, Dave's given us a, a recommendation and, uh, to approve. Does anybody have any comments?
Red, it looks pretty simple.
You have a motion to approve simplified site plan?
Yes.
For, we call Fager.
Second.
Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Will you all come visit?
Yeah.
Near zero net energy, we're near, we're zero net electric and very little natural gas, even with the coldest winter ever.
I visited, terrific.
So, come...
So you're almost off the grid?
Well, no, you have, the grid is, is your battery basically, so... Well, we're paying, but it's, it's complicated, but come visit, I'll explain. Yes. Thank you. Thank you. So the application is a little complicated, just a little bit. My memo kind of aligns the timeframe of what has happened over the years as the property has changed hands and when he bought the property, he was told it wasn't required to have a certificate of occupancy, which, no, it's not true, so the house itself does not have a certificate of occupancy. One of the criteria for an accessory apartment is that the house has a certificate of occupancy and it does not, however, it meets all the other criteria for an accessory apartment. Unfortunately, I couldn't do an inspection and issue a CO for the house because it contains the accessory apartment that was built by the previous owner. Okay, there's no record of this accessory apartment, not within the building department, that even, was never even picked up by the assessor. So we have, it's a little complicated. My recommendation is for the board to make their review on this application, then if it deems that the application meets the criteria and wishes to approve it, that they approve it with conditions, because the applicant has come forth and he's made an application for a building permit to do some interior renovation and to do a complete energy retrofit of the house, and I guess he can explain more of that to you.
How do we get legal? How do we get a CO?
Well, if, if the board were to, if the board were to approve the accessory apartment conditional on the building permit that he has just applied for, when all that work is complete, I can CO everything.
So is this a new accessory apartment or the only accessory apartment? So you're getting an approval for one that already exists? You're not building another one?
That's correct. So, you know, like I said, it is a little bit complicated, but we can, we can fix it on the back end, but I can't give him a CO unless he's got land use approvals for the apartment.
So, so what are you doing with that? Are you doing renovation?
Yeah, it's actually part of a New York State funded research project to develop kind of ways to do a very aggressive energy retrofit to reduce both energy and carbon emissions. Using, basically, it's an insulation detail from the outside, so the cladding has been well beyond its life cycle, as well as the windows, and so this would basically go from the outside and insulate from the outside without doing a lot of work on the inside. So it kind of makes it more feasible to train builders on how to do these. This is also my work professionally, so it's to be able to train and educate builders about how to do this.
Cool.
And make it solar ready as well.
So you're going to do all that, you're going to make it solar?
We're going to make it solar ready, in other words.
They're going to install solar?
It's not likely, but we would exploit it. The main work is really to make the house as durable and energy efficient as possible in the most cost effective ways.
Anybody else? I have a motion to grant a conditional approval for an accessory apartment subject to obtaining a certificate of occupancy for single family residence and submit plans for the accessory apartment. I just have one question. You show a private well in municipal sewer.
Yeah.
How does that work? You're using well for your water? Are you using sewer to septic or?
Yeah, I guess the tenant's was all done before they purchased the house.
Okay.
It's odd.
Okay.
Just had to replace well pump, unfortunately.
You still pay the full load if you're using sewer?
We pay the portion of the, yeah, sewer rate.
Okay, I have a motion for conditional approval for accessory apartment subject to obtaining a certificate of occupancy for single family residence and application for apartment. A second. Is your?
So there's no change on the inside, on the inside?
We're actually, we're gonna have to do some minor, actually not minor, some change by adding a bathroom, but that's not for the apartment, basically would not, it's exactly what it was when we purchased the place, same footprint.
Okay, so is that the correct way to proceed? Condition the use of accessory apartment on the CO for the entire. We had a motion, we had a second, any more discussion?
Actually, can I just clarify, is there someone in there now?
Yeah, there's, from when we purchased the place, ever since, it's always been occupied.
Okay, so I would just suggest, what's your timeframe for accomplishing?
Immediate.
He's made his application.
Application is already submitted.
Are we able to time it with a CO? How long do you anticipate the work, what it'll take on our house?
Three months.
So I would just say they have a date certain for when this work needs to be completed, so if there is an issue and it drags on, you have the opportunity to see the applicant again.
So we make it condition now or conditional on any dates or something?
Would you condition that the CO, that the applicant complete the work necessary to issue a CO within 120 days?
Or would you go six months?
Six months?
Six months. And then would?
Yes.
So.
So in order to get, in order to lawfully apply, occupy that apartment, these things should be corrected within that six month period.
Will it be buttoned up within six months?
Hopefully, a lot sooner.
Can you try this one? For a conditional approval, accessory apartment subject to obtaining a certificate of occupancy within 120 days?
Six months, so October 15th?
150?
No, October 15th. So October 15th, which is.
October 15th, okay. By October 15th and application for the, I guess you have to be building permit, having inspection all the way. Okay, if you want to say she's in.
Do you have a question?
No, I had a question about blocking the garage with parking, but the garage is no longer going to be used, it's going to be abandoned. There are some floods that you have, I saw the details, they're shielded, and they're going to wait.
No, I think I put in the specs to make sure they're shielded and basically down there.
Well, he has the rec page, right.
Okay, all in favor?
All in.
Resolutions does say payment of all fees. The resolution does say payment of all fees.
Well, you can't get a CO.
It can amend, like to amend the resolution to make it subject to payment of all fees.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Good evening. So we are back again, we have Jeff Scully here today filling in for Charlie Frankel. He submitted a bunch more information last month, he submitted a stormwater pollution prevention plan, we addressed Dave's comments, we submitted some information on the future plans of the farm parcel. And at this point, we, you know, we really feel like we made every effort to address all the concerns, provide a lot of information, a lot of detail, and at this point, we'd really like to move forward. Mary, Kate and Ian are anxious to start building the house and we asked the board to consider a final condition. We know there's a few items that would need to be conditioned, such as health department approval and things like that. But that's, it's very, it's very, it's made. There was a building code issue, a fire code issue about the driveway, the driveway length, that it needs to be the width of 12 feet minimum on the driveway, and there also needs to be co-op if the driveway is longer than 500 feet. So we're looking at that, that's one thing that needs to be changed for the, to meet the New York State Fire Code. Very minor things, like this, it's, we're still looking for the septic system documentation, and these are all conditions, the correction on the limited disturbance, and then whatever George might have with ours, conservation easement, open space.
There are a couple of other, one is you're going to submit the conservation easement, as I recall, revised, to show what areas are being concerned?
We submitted that as our first medal.
We had a discussion at the last meeting and I recall that Mr. Frankel was submitting a revised document.
No, we, we, our proposal continues to be the conservation easement over the two lots, two and three, which is the documentation we submitted originally. The farm parcel is part of an ongoing discussion, is going to be a separate easement that Pete has been talking with Tina Hudson and Wolf Valley Land Trust and that is kind of an ongoing process, so.
Okay.
Certainly, yeah.
Did you find the 2006 plan?
Yeah, I actually submitted that, I don't know, I submitted it as part of my historical narrative with attachments.
Did that include the conventional plan in the cluster at that point?
That was the current plan, that was the plan that received conditional plan.
Which would be a cluster plan.
Right.
And what I'm trying to recall is whether there ever was a conventional plan at that point, because the, the code says you submit a cluster and you submit a conventional plan. The theory is the cluster plan will demonstrate if the purposes of the code are being achieved and by logic reigning supreme, the applicant will presumably pursue the cluster plan. This is a little unusual, as I recall, because the real intention here is not reducing the area of the lots, it's to reduce the area of the frontage that's required, so it's a little bit of a hybrid between cluster plan and a variance. But what I really did want to understand is the extent to which the area that's shown as being under the conservation easement is actually reflecting a reduction in lot size, because that's the purpose of the conservation easement in the standard conventional, standard cluster.
Right.
And these lots are in excess of what's required by code.
Yeah, I guess this is in some ways not a conventional cluster plan. I mean, the idea.
It's accomplishing one of the purposes of the code.
Right.
Not as a traditional.
Can I say something?
Please do.
The reason why, we had two options when we went into this, and the reason why we went towards the cluster option was, one, we were sort of encouraged to do that, but two, we did want to have some type of protection for those lots, because of the farm, I didn't, I wanted to make sure that, you know, that whenever a house was built, it was in an envelope, that they couldn't do a whole lot or anything more than their home. And that was sort of the reason why we went in that direction. We could have went in another direction, the other direction was that we have so much road frontage there that we could have probably took a hundred foot of road frontage for the first lot, and if I understand, unless they've rewritten the laws, the hundred feet of road frontage has to go back 50 feet, it doesn't have to go back the whole length of the lot, that was one of the things that was pointed out to us.
It has to be, it has to meet the lot width requirement at the building line or the front setback.
Right, and so, so we were told that we would, we could have probably taken away maybe an acre in the front for those two lots and still went back with our driveways and put a permanent agricultural easement on those, those intrusions onto the farm and still farmed it, kept it as open space and not had to get involved with the cluster subdivision. But I just felt like in talking to my lawyer and a few people that we were embracing a better situation, we didn't know it was going to turn into all of this.
I think the goal is to maximize the amount of land that's still going to be farmed as well as the easements preserving the open space on the lot. I think as a totality, the plan both preserves agricultural nature as well as the open space in the lots themselves, the post lots.
We've known all along that it wasn't to full cluster plan and we've kind of gone forward with that.
So I think the way we talked about it at the last meeting was there'll be, I believe we talked about on a note, to reflect that for the farm parcel, that the parcel has been created.
the 100 feet of road frontage has to go back 50 feet. It doesn't have to go back the whole length of the lot. That was one of the things that was pointed out to us.
It has to be, it has to meet the lot width requirement at the building line or the front setback.
Right. And so, so we were told that we would, we could have probably taken away maybe an acre in the front for those two lots and still went back with our driveways and put a permanent agricultural easement on those, those intrusions onto the farm and still farmed it, kept it as open space, and not had to get involved with the cluster subdivision. But I just felt like in talking to my lawyer and a few people, that we were embracing a better situation. We didn't know it was going to turn into all of this.
And I think the proposal kind of maximizes the amount of land that's still going to be farmed, as well as the easements preserving the open space on the lot. I think as a totality, the plan both preserves agricultural nature as well as the open space in the lots themselves, the post-lots.
We've known all along that it wasn't to full cluster plan, and we've kind of gone forward with that.
So, I think the way we talked about it at the last meeting was there'll be, I believe we talked about it on a note, to reflect that for the farm parcel, that the parcel has been created because the, the two residential lots have reduced, reductions in the size of the driveway. Because what you typically are looking at with a cluster is what's a conventional subdivision plan look like and what's a conventional. So, as Mr. Talafaro says, you could chop off three lots, each with the necessary frontage, and avoid the need to go through a cluster or any other form of reduction. What this is doing is allowing the farm parcel to remain as a single farm parcel. But that doesn't mean that at some point in the future, someone could not come back in and seek to subdivide that in a way as if it were a standard lot. So, what I think we talked about at the last meeting was making provision on the plan, basically putting a note which indicates to anyone reviewing this in the future that the cluster plan was approved because of the farm parcel was going to remain as one contiguous and, one contiguous parcel on which it would be an operating farm.
Which is, yeah, which is what we did. We had a subdivision note one that talks about that, that this, the intent of the subdivision was a cluster, and can I read it to you?
No, I actually read it last night.
Oh, okay. I thought you were.
And, no, what I think we need to do is make, well, we can make a revision to that. I'd like to clarify a little bit, but that's, I just want to make sure that was.
That was the intent of that note to address that, as well as Pete's narrative on his intent on the farm parcel.
So, it's not restricting it from further subdivision. It's simply saying, these are the circumstances under which these two lots were created, and that is something that will be considered if and when a subdivision of the farm parcel is ever proposed.
What kind of restrict it?
Well, the problem with, there's a couple of reasons. One is the applicant doesn't propose to restrict it at this point.
Were you agreeing to that?
Well, no. I don't know if they'll agree to it. But I want to clarify what's happening here. This is allowing one of the code's objectives to be realized, which is the conservation of farmland and farming operations. What you typically have done when there is a subdivision for residential purposes, you've gone through, analyzed how many lots could be achieved, as in the car, and you come out with a lot count. And then the applicant can modify that subdivision design as necessary to increase the open space and preserve the number of lots and reduce the amount of infrastructure. And that's all related to building an open space. This is somewhat different. The objective here is not to accomplish a permanent shifting of the open space, which is what the conservation easement does. It is to allow the plan of development to take place in a way that keeps the farming option alive and viable. So, if you were to say it could never be developed, you could request that of the applicant. The applicant, taking under advisement. But I don't believe that's what they're intending of.
Yes, but if, we can ask you, would that be a problem to re- to, to further subdivision of the lot?
Well, I mean, we tried to sort of talk about that last time. I think it's, Pete's not totally sure what he wants to do with the property. He has, he has ideas, he's talking, Sinek Hudson. Part of, part of their requirement possibly would be to subdivide up one lot that has a house. I don't think that's something that, the way we want to go with it, we feel like the subdivision, the two lots on their own have their own open space, their 50% open space, who knows what? There's large lots, we put on to, I think it's half acre under the cluster. They're two and four acres. So, we feel like that part of the subdivision meets the requirements on its own, and, which is why we're requesting the waiver on that and the 50% of the whole parcel.
Well, I want to, I want to answer Peter's question. You know, I really don't want to at this point in time, I have to, I have to, I'm talking with the Hudson Dally of Agricultural Business and Development Corp. I'm talking to Sinek Hudson, I'm talking to Walker Valley Land Trust, looking at options for the farm to remain some type of a farming operation. At this time, do I want to commit to that as we move forward for Ian to build a home? No. I just, I don't, I mean, I just feel like I can't, I don't think anybody here would want to make a move with their assets and decide that they want to freeze their thing. It's something they've worked for, for their entire life. I don't know what Sinek Hudson's going to say. I don't know what the Development Corp.'s going to say in regard to the amount of land I have there, and we're trying to tie other parcels together with it. So, I, my intention is to, is to continue to farm, and my family's behind me with that, but I don't want to shut that door right now.
And so, what we're trying to do is we're trying to balance that, where I think was a very reasonable desire to keep Pete's options open, but not to hide the ball. To make the, to make the note to say that this was a proposed cluster subdivision, and that any further subdivision, if there is a request, as the note says, will have to take into account the considerations that went into this proceeding to make the initial subdivision. We're not trying to hide the ball here. We're just trying to balance those two in the interest.
So, for instance, if in the future. Well, but when you come back to it, here's the context in which that happened. You have the applicant before you indicating that this parcel is going to be, probably going to be preserved. That's their intention, and there's discussions to accomplish that in. And if there is a conservation easement, it's not going to be, leave it, will not allow further subdivision of the property. So, you're going to know what exactly is being done to the farm parcel in the future. And you can, and what you have to do now is make a determination as to whether you'll waive the 50% requirement of the entire subdivision. You can do that, it is within your power. It is within your power of conditions. If you choose to do it, of what you will allow in terms of a future subdivision of that farm parcel. So, you can put into the record and into the circumstances of this that that issue will be reviewed at that future point and the determination made with respect to these considerations that you've made today.
One of the conversations I had with Sinek Hudson, because they came up with several scenarios, because they have to sort of divide the land up to, because you have to even call out agricultural infrastructure once they put these deed covenants in place, if you're moving in that direction. And one of the things that came up was the problem we were talking about, what we're trying to do with the, with this cluster subdivision was, well, they're talking, well, there is the possibility that maybe the house that exists there should come off of the agricultural conservation easement that we're looking at. And so, then some, at the same time, they said, well, maybe that should be the third lot. And, and there should be an envelope around that, and then the farm, you know, is separate.
And the farm would, the farm parcel would not have.
Would be separate.
Further residential.
Right.
Resident.
Right. But they said that maybe we should, there's, maybe we should juxtapose it in regard to calling the entire farm the third lot, and calling out property with the house with an envelope around it as the third lot. So, we don't have this, I don't know. I don't know what to say. Where we're going with this thing. We just wanted to cut off a couple pieces of property to build a house for my son.
Yeah, I think this is taken so.
Yeah, I mean, if you guys are really against it, if you're not Robert Barrens from New Jersey, I would have subdivided this land a long time ago if I needed money.
So, we, well, last time we mentioned a math note. They made the math note, but you're not happy with it. I don't get why. Just to move things along.
It's not, if I were looking at this 10 years from now, I would not be sure what was intended to be accomplished.
Okay.
So, that's, that's my sole.
So, okay, so how can we tinker with the language to get it so it's more?
What I would suggest is if you want to proceed forward with the approval and you want to grant the waiver, go through these things in sequence. And I would do a resolution which would memorialize what the.
Intent is.
Conditions are and what the intent is. And then the notes can be conformed to the resolution.
Right, and then this note is our first shot at the note. I mean, we have, if you want, you know, some revisions, or if there's some where it needs to be added, that can.
Depending on what you want. Well, my intent is not to change it, it's to clarify.
Okay.
It seems to me like a good part of the open space is in the river. You know, I'm not sure that.
No hospitals.
If it wasn't developed well anyway, I'm not sure you're giving us much, you know?
Repairing rights.
The river is probably not even a half acre, third of an acre.
This one's actually looking at where the water is, but I'm looking at where the water comes from.
Well, I can tell you.
Flood plain?
I can tell you that the, the plans that Sinek Hudson gave me, they consider the fact that we own to the middle of the river part of the conservation easement, and that would be some of the property that would be, that we'd be reimbursed for.
So, you can sell water, land with the water, huh?
It could have value.
Well, you own the land under the water, you just have to let whoever wants to go buy, go buy.
So, let me just point out that the, the cluster subdivision provisions require submission of a narrative, and the first three factors that are supposed to be discussed in that narrative are preservation of contiguous prime and important agricultural soils, maintenance of active agricultural land, protection of the ground, the surface, water, wetlands, steep slopes, flood plains, and areas of scenic or historical significance. So, in terms of, I mean, that's what you consider in determining whether the cluster should be approved at all. And then you go through and apply these different waiver requests and determine which of those you'll accept. And then you'll make your secret determination, and then you can proceed forward with consideration of subdivision approval with appropriate conditions and determine, if you wish, you can determine whether you wish to waive the final and grant conditional final. Three-lot subdivision is typically something you've considered conditional for, conditional final. So, it is, it is, you know, a question of how much revision or change is necessary? Are you comfortable with making a condition that can be reviewed by the chairman and the engineer, for example, and approved, what's it satisfactory to them? Or is it a condition where you want to come back and see the application or the result of that condition before you grant final approval?
Okay, great, I'll start. Go ahead.
I'm with you.
I mean, this is not that complicated.
So, first, you would make a determination that you wish to grant cluster subdivision approval based on the narrative the applicant has submitted and the discussion that has been had between the board and the applicant over the last two weeks.
I would make a motion for the, yeah, I would make a motion. Wait, so just to get, okay, okay, I'll get to that.
You know, there was a discussion yesterday in Mohawk Consultations Meeting up there about farm families and land and what can be done, and the subject came up of that, how much farmers really have to carry with that check that comes back to them for selling vegetables, open space and, you know, and all kinds of stuff. And so, I mean, I'd gladly sign a paper tonight if the town of New Falls wants to throw some money in the ring when we make the provisions for the permanent agricultural easement on the property. I mean, you understand what I'm saying? I mean, it's, it's, I don't know, it's a, I'm just, I'm just frustrated about the whole situation. But, but we are protecting, we have and are protecting, and we are protecting a very, you know, a unique piece of property in the town, and we want to carry on with that. And I wouldn't mind seeing my family be part of that on there, and I don't know.
So, if the board is so inclined to proceed with the cluster in the cluster portion of the resolution, I would state the three reasons I just stated as being your rationale for approving the cluster plan in this case.
So, we approve cluster first and secret.
Well, I'd say why don't we approve?
Well, you approve the clustering of the clustering plan in concept, and then you'll have to go through and review the different waivers that have been requested. You did make a waiver request. Perhaps you can review that with the board, you can make a determination about those requests. And then you can do secret based on the plan with the waivers approved, and then you can consider action on preliminary approval. And then we go on. So, the first resolution would be to approve the cluster plan based on the three factors discussed.
Mr. Willingham? Motion to approve the cluster plan based on the.
Is that motion?
Yeah, well. Go ahead.
No, I thought we already made that motion.
We didn't have a second.
Okay.
Motion to approve the cluster plan based on the narrative.
The narrative from Willingham Engineering, and your consideration of the first three factors as being the reasons why you're approving it.
I'll make the motion. Second?
I'm just going to add a little bit more discussion here is, from my point, I still see it as a flag lot development. I don't, it may even meet the requirements for cluster, even though it's best intentioned. I don't see a reason why a lot of other applicants wouldn't come in with the same plan to put flag lots in.
They don't want to park.
Because they don't have a farm, lots of them have a lot of land. So, that, that's, that's my further discussion. So, anybody else? All in favor?
Pardon?
Opposed? Myself. Board one. Passed. What is the second?
The second is consider the waivers that are being requested.
And these are waivers just associated.
Waivers from the clustering requirements of section 1.5, 1.1, 2.5, C. The small. C, parenth, two.
It's D2, D15, and D17.
Okay, so do you want to take the board through those specific waiver requests and why you did this?
The first one is, D2 says that not more than two lots shall have frontage, the required frontage shall not be less than 25 feet for more than half the lots in the clustered group. So, there's three lots. We have two more than half, two lots with 25 feet next to each other. And our justification to that is to preserve the farmland, which is front.
Which is consistent with the effectives of the clustering lots, though.
Second one is there's a requirement for 150-foot distance between neighboring properties in the clustered tract. And in this case, we're against the property line in that area. And our justification being, we believe the intent was kind of, clustered lots can be sort of dense residential. In this case, they're two and four acre lots. And there's a large buffer that exists between there and Nielsen, Nielsen House to the north there.
But that's not your property.
Right.
Are you allowed to use somebody else's property for your buffer?
Well, I think the intent of that part talks about a vegetated buffer. That's really the intent of that. And I think that a large one exists, as well as a smaller one provided on the property. And again, the lots are large lots. The third one is one we've already discussed, the 50%, which is supposed to be of the whole subdivision. In this case, we're not really developing the 26 acres, it's really kind of a piece of the property. So, we think it should be 50% of that piece that we're developing. should be 50% of that piece that we're developing.
And that's it? So now it's only 25, uh...
Edit it.
D17.
What was the, what was the previous one?
D, it's D2, D15, and D7. Or 121, 5, C2.
Did you look at nine? Nine says a lot width at the actual or the proposed building line shall not be less than 15 feet.
You need that.
With the proposed building line? Lot width, between the side doors. Just, just checking, I'm actually checking on that. If you need a waiver, this will be the time to ask. So this, this is what you have to do in order to approve waivers. Planning board may, in an instance where a developer has proposed a plan of development that is not consistent with all the requirements of section C, those are three cases where it's identified where it's not consistent, but which the planning board finds would achieve the objectives of this section and the goals of the comprehensive master plan, you may waiver modify the minimum requirements of that, of those three sections, in order to accomplish those objectives. And the logic that I see for you to do that is that this would allow the preservation of farmland, agricultural soils, and areas of environmental significance on the property. And that is your determination to make for a method.
I just wanna just go back to, we're, we left this public hearing open before we vote, shouldn't we find out?
You should make your secret determination.
Before it's... Okay.
Before you close. Just when you close the hearing. There's an interesting case where the is, the conclusion of the case is, until you have made your secret determination, you do not have a complete application. And you must have your hearing on the complete application. So when you close your hearing, after you've done secret, you have the basis for demonstrating that you did have a complete application.
Okay.
So there is a logic. I don't agree with it, but that's...
Okay, so, um, we can, you have a motion to waive G, uh, all 121 dash 25, C2. All three of them, and then it's D2.
D2, D15, and D17.
Right. Okay, is there a motion to approve the waiver? Uh, 121 dash 25, dash 2, C2, uh, D2, 15, and 17?
Seven.
Snack it. No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I do. Opposed? I want to do secret.
Now I have to channel Dave. Okay, number one. We go... This is the impact assessment from the short form EIA. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? Uh, I believe it does not, it is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan, and with the waivers that have been approved by the board, it would not create conflict with zoning regulations or the subdivision code. So I would check that one, no. That's the voice.
Would you do that, just say no, and then not that heads and agrees?
Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? I believe that should be checked. Small impact. There will be a change in the use of land for a portion of the property, but it is consistent with zoning, it is allowed by the zoning code, and it's less than the, uh, development that could take place if the property were developed at the maximum level allowed by zoning. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? Does anybody believe it would? Then check that one, no. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of critical environmental area? That one would be no, because there is no critical environmental area in the town at all. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic? Or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway? Uh, I believe that one would be no. It would not be adverse to have traffic from two residences, which normally is not a significant or adverse conflict. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy? And it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
It's going to be built by the New York State Building Code, so we're good there.
The proposed action, will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies? Public or private water, wastewater treatment utilities? It's going to have water and sewer approved by the Department of Health, so the presumption is will not be any significant or large impacts associated with that. And again, it's fairly small residential development on a fairly large parcel of land. Will the proposed action impair the quality or character of according historical, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? Anybody aware of any of the above? I would check, no. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, e.g. wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, and fauna? There's no wetlands that you're affecting, there is, the water body that's on the property is, you have two irrigation ponds?
Well, they're small ponds, we, you know, regularly irrigate, I don't know if we have.
Right, but the irrigation ponds are used to...
Yeah, man, man.
Uh, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna. I'm not, are you aware of any rare or endangered species that exist on your farm?
No.
Okay. And I would say this is no or smaller, small impact debate. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? This is the engineer to answer. Some, most things I'm willing to, but when it says drainage?
Answer is no. And he's taking care of that.
Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? Uh, I'll take the, the, if they know. So on consideration of the fact, the absence of any moderate to large impact, I believe the board can consider a negative declaration for the proposed action, taking into account the representations of the applicant with respect to the cluster subdivision, achieving the purpose of preserving farming opportunities.
Have a motion to approve and make that, or submit a... All in favor?
Aye.
Next problem?
So should we take any more public hearing comments there?
So at this point, you may consider closing the panel here.
We're asking if any more...
Any other comments? Is there a motion to close public hearing?
Sure.
All in favor? The next step would be to...
To consider preliminary approval, there are some conditions of approval that I would, recommend that you include, one being the requirement for the conservation easement to be provided in final form. And you would have to identify who would be the responsible party. And then it has to go to the, uh, town board, and the town board will tell you whether or not they wish to consider taking it. Uh, assuming the town board will say no, as they typically have, it would have to identify a not-for-profit that's qualified pursuant to...
George Walkhill, uh, because I'm talking with the Walkhill Valley Land Trust, and they know we were trying to do these two lots, they said that they would possibly be interested in, you know, in, uh...
But you need to come to that conclusion before the plan...
I know, that's why I'm working with them is...
I... But they all agree about that, I guess. And I do want to remind the board that I have been acting as counsel for the land trust in some instances. I don't believe that would be a conflict of interest in this case, if the board has, but we will, I will act accordingly when the time comes. If that is the entity that winds up doing the transaction.
So will the first end up the town board, sorry?
You, what I would suggest is that become a condition of final approval. That the town board not, uh, have any issue with the conservation easement. Because there is theory, it can be accepted by the town, and it can be, the town can act as the conservation entity. There is a requirement for a, um, endowment to be established. And that would be among the things that would have to be taken care of before the plan could be signed. There is also need for a driveway maintenance agreement, which we would have to see and review before the plan would be signed. Is that something you have typically made a condition of approval?
That's been submitted already. I don't know if we can...
Reason it...
Well, I'll try to have it all...
I think it's in the...
I'll take a look then. There is, let's see. I think those are the significant requirement, there, there are some general conditions that we impose, such as payment of all review fees, payment of recreation fees, subdivision waivers also.
Improvement waivers.
Do you want to go through that?
121, 17, B1.
Ah, yes.
And this.
Is that sidewalk through the stuff?
Yes, sidewalk through the stuff.
Do they have sidewalks in the...
Is that what you recommend, then?
Well, this is something that you may wish to consider, what we have typically done is waived most of the subdivision improvement fees, uh, improvement requirements at in bulk, and then discuss whether or not was need for a sidewalk or a sidewalk easement, which has become sort of the default requirement if sidewalks are not being provided. So, did you submit a letter, written request for... I'm not sure, no?
I'm sure we would have...
Uh, can you just, we've done this before, literally go through the... They will take you through the checklist, you'll tell us whether you want to waive it, and then your attorney can write down the list of things that you're requesting waiver, and you'll have a written...
No curves.
Waiver, please.
These are the numbers you should...
That's 121, 17, B1. A is sidewalks, I'm gonna leave that for later. B is curves. C is water main. D is storm sewers. E is sanitary sewers. F is street signs. And G is street trees. We don't have any streets.
You haven't like a way around all of the above requests.
Okay. I have a motion to approve a waiver of subdivision improvement, uh, section 121, 17, B1, A, not A, like B, C, D, E, F, and G.
Should we pass that?
Uh, I kept it up separate. Kept it up separate.
Sure.
Give the sidewalk, I'll give it to you.
My, I didn't give sidewalk, so it's a motion. So the, the motion to approve waiver of B2G, 121, 17, B1. Any other discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And we'll come back to sidewalks, which is 121, 17, B1, A.
This is the end of Plin's Road.
I mean, it seems like you sell easement with these, with these plans.
I think an easement would make sense just for uniformity, if always done, I don't think that it's an easement that anybody, if they ever build a sidewalk there, they already have the land, and of course they would have to have a sidewalk district or something, but it's, uh, in most cases, it's, it's...
Our children's lifetimes. But the, just so you understand, what we have typically been requiring of applicants, because the code says you're supposed to provide sidewalks, and because typically, a sidewalk for a small stretch of road does not necessarily make a lot of sense as part of a particular subdivision, but having the ability at some point in the future to put these together, and if a sidewalk district should be created by the residents, to allow this to be constructed with a minimal amount of impact on the public. What the board has requested is that you are providing easement to the town to allow the installation of sidewalks, if a sidewalk district should be created, and that you would agree to participate in the sidewalk district at such time as it is due to agree. So basically, this preserves, this allows the flexibility of putting in legal infrastructure in place of speech.
Mm-hmm.
But until the residents actually create such a district, will not be a sidewalk.
This said sidewalk would be along the public road. Right?
Which I... In front of your house?
Yeah.
It's just a easement on paper, for probably ever.
So it would be 15 feet from, uh, 40 feet from the central line.
Well, we, we know how that would go over with the Plains Road, right?
Yes. Bring it to the list, so...
People could walk down to the farm.
It'd be nice to have a nicer connection from the rail trail, so people don't...
And now that's...
Yeah, exactly. Bring that up.
So of course, according to the map, you would, you own out, you own the land underneath Plains Road. And what this does is allow flexibility to create an easement at some point within 15, or would effectively be 15 feet from the edge of pavement, and along the property line, but it would not be created unless and until the district exists and there is a plan to put a sidewalk through. So it's, it's sort of like keeping the all or nothing option open.
It's a lock.
And you don't want to have the sidewalk...
I don't think any of us will have to worry about that.
So, are you asking for that waiver?
You did ask.
Yeah, yeah, we're asking for the easement. Do I have a motion to approve your waiver?
For the sidewalk?
For the sidewalk, 121, 17...
Well, we want a substitute easement for it.
The E?
Because the applicant is offering easement.
Waiver on condition of the easement?
You don't accept the easement?
I'm accepting it. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I accept the easement, that'll be, uh, putting it on the paper too.
Aye.
Okay, one of, one of the conditions of the approvals that you would, I would recommend you consider is that the applicant comply with all the, uh, engineer comments of April 9th. Remind the plan to conform to the engineering comments of April 9th. So with that, I believe you could consider adopting a resolution.
Okay, you can read through this one. Help me out a little bit.
I'll help you out tomorrow when I find it out. But yeah.
I have a motion for preliminary conditional approval for three lot subdivision, subject to establishing a conservation easement acceptable to the town. Which would include an endowment, acceptable?
Include an endowment and the opportunity for the town board to determine whether or not it wished to accept the easement.
Acceptable to the town. Giving them the option to accept the easement and the endowment. Driveway maintenance agreement. A payment of all fees for the subdivision.
Should include recreation fee, just to.
It's not improvement, subdivision recreation fees.
All review fees and the subdivision payment, payment in lieu for recreation.
All subdivision review fees and recreation fees for subdivision. And subject to compliance with the engineering comments from Plaza Associates April ninth letter. And establishment of a sidewalk easement on the public highway. Make any more?
Mm-hmm.
So I have the motion.
Yeah, I'll send it.
Okay, a second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So at this point, you can consider whether you wish to waive the final, the public hearing on the final plan and consider granting conditional final approval. I think you did not have any comment for the public hearing on preliminary, so I would not anticipate that would be issues with closing, waiving that here.
So I have a motion to waive the final, final approval public hearing. Final public, final public. Final public hearing for approval. All in favor? To waive the one.
So at this point, given the nature of the conditions and the plan, you could consider granting conditional final subdivision approval, subject to the conditions of course that were stated before and compliance with the requirements of the final subdivision section of the code.
So you took the chairman's side?
And the chairman can then sign when all the conditions have been satisfied.
Great. I'll make that motion?
Second.
So we have a motion seconded to grant conditional final approval for the three lot subdivision subject to the conditions and leave it to the planning board chairman to approve the final paperwork and sign. All in favor?
Aye.
The former chairman used the fay, I wouldn't linger around if I were you.
We're not used to it yet.
We're just getting used to it.
How's the asparagus?
Still in the ground.
So, you ready to do the site plan now? The last time we were here, we kind of, we thought the applications were going to be separate. Might kind of put them together. We didn't get any comments from the board, the consultants on the site plan. Better know what the plans were on that.
I think what we'd clarify was Stacy that she had no issues with that, as I remember. See Stacy's every time, she hasn't mentioned anything.
Everything's on paper now, you saw.
Okay. Did you, site plan? Did you have an application? We submitted a full site planification and EAF and narrative.
So, we're going to approve the site plan. I think we've covered all the issues. There's no disturbance, so it'll be easy. We're going to do the EAF for the application. Just the impact assessment section. Number one, will the proposed action create a material conflict with the Dr. Lanners, Lanners zoning regulations? I believe that would be no. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of land use? Small, but it's rated as a small impact to two houses. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused establishment of a critical environmental area? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructures for mass transit biking and walkway? No. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or use renewable energy opportunities? I believe that would be no. Will the proposed action impact existing public-private water supplies? No. Will the proposed action impact existing public-private wastewater treatment utilities? That would be no. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? That would be no. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? Example, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, fluoroprene. No. And will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? That would be no. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental, environmental resources or any would help? No.
Did I clarify something? Is this? I'm trying to recall, is this housing located in the Front Lane?
No.
No. Do we, did you do an affidavit that it was just the U's because maybe it's Johnson? There was one I remember which wasn't.
No.
Okay. Never mind.
So I have a motion to approve or negate that for site plan review secret. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You have a motion to approve the site plan approval. You have health department for the temporary housing already?
Well, we usually have less than four people. So, we don't have to always have the health department down. Depends on what kind of year it is, if we have more than four people, then we have to get the health department involved. Is that what you're asking?
Well, I'm just, I was looking at the narrative and it said you're looking for approval from the health department of the septic for the. Wasn't sure if it was the septic approval or.
I thought you were asking about the buildings.
No, the, the narrative says potable water is provided by well in the process of obtaining approval from the health department for these systems that serve the temporary housing. So this is a central sewer?
Yes.
And there's individual wells or one well?
One well.
Okay. So, this says you're in the process of obtaining approval.
Well, yeah, we need to, we need to get the approval from the health department for the septic system and the water connections to the trailer. And I've already talked to the talker and it doesn't appear it's a big issue. We have documentation about the whole bill and so, so yes, we do, we do have things there.
So you spell big condition of approval?
Because I think we just need to submit some simple access.
Chris, Chris just wants it on, we never put it on paper. We never put it on paper and Chris Cresser of the health department basically just wants it on paper and he'll sign off.
We'll get the top of the paperwork.
Yeah?
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, we'll have.
Andy, I'm curious what the health department is calling that water supply.
As far as the type of water supply? He basically just wanted me to show the line in the plan where they're coming from. If Chris wanted.
That's a number of users who didn't qualify for transit.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think they're from train yet. They're, they worked there for summer. Use only seasonally, I think.
Right. One point we asked before heights of the pond. We got the topo on that.
You got it, you got it.
Yeah. So you have, you have. No, it was really just stock. So, do I have a motion for a conditional approval of site plan subject to obtaining department health approval of water and sewer for farm work of housing existing? So, a second? A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so you have conditional approval. I would imagine there are fees associated with the site plan.
I think they're all paid up.
They're all paid up, okay. Subject to the word health.
So, all right. Thank the board. It's a pleasure and I'll take your council's advice and get while we're getting this good. But thank you so much for your time. You got to go through.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing's happening to it.
Yeah. They requested it probably taken off.
We're going to show, sure.
Yes, okay, well, we're, we're here to continue our review of the CBS office proposal. Last month we were here. Last week we were here, we explained the. Last week we were here, we explained the addition of the Five Guys restaurant to the site plan, uh, the elimination of any of the variance requests we had before. And since then, uh, we have gotten a comment letter back from the board's traffic consultant. We've been doing our traffic studies. The project was reviewed by the county planning board earlier in the month. And what we want to do is go over some of the issues that are still up on the application and see if we can make some headway as, as getting towards approval. There was a couple of issues on the site plan when we were looking over the ordinance, two potential, two or three potential waivers that we need the board to consider. The first deals with the EV charging stations. Where there's requirement in the code for installing a certain number of electric vehicle charging stations. And the site plan does have those stations called out, do the spots called out in the site plan?
We're showing a conduit that would be coming from the building out to where those parking spaces would be right next to the bicycle parking area.
Bicycle parking area. But what we're seeking to waiver, and I do believe this language in the code for it, we're seeking to waiver that we don't actually install the charging stations just at this point, let the conduit just be put in and they're ready to go. Our reason behind that, I think we're probably the first one up in town as far as a commercial development that's going to be approved at this size that would require these charging stations, so, yeah.
So, you don't want to be in the vanguard?
What's that?
You don't want to be in the vanguard with that?
Well, I don't want necessarily to be the guinea pig, I would say, but it's, you know, I'm not quite sure, you know, the details of the design, how it would be, it seems to be better if, if... Obviously, we have the commitment, we have to commit at some point, but that if there was another proposal that came along, whether it be something at the college or similar, commercial development there, we could have some sort of stabilization, but, you know, make them, make them all similar.
I looked at the college today and they have a credit card swipe type thing, there's two of whom, uh, that I would imagine they put in by some company that takes a portion of the proceeds.
It seems like, it seems like the washing machine kind of thing.
Yeah.
So, that would be one waiver.
All right, that's one waiver. The second one, there is a section in your code, Chris actually brought this up, I think, last month or the month before, there is a section in code that talks about the site plan showing any trees that are 12 inches or more in diameter. And there also is provisions in the code that, that there is a clearly ingrained portion of your code, but we're, our site plan's showing that we are going to take down the trees in the middle of the property. There is certain natural vegetation left on the outside of the property, on the outer boundaries of it, but the trees in the middle, we will be taking them all down. So, we're asking for a waiver of doing that, doing that survey. The site is disturbed, you know, it has been filled over the years, changed, I think probably when the, when the two way bridge was constructed. I don't know whether there are any trees at 12 inches or not, I don't imagine there'd be a lot of them out there, but did the plan though show that we would be taking the trees?
That's, yeah.
Yeah.
The nature of the development of the site is coming in and raising the whole level of the site as we presented in the past, so, um, the area that we've outlined for development there, there's really no trees that could be seen because, because of the nature of the fill that's been brought in to raise the greenness of it.
Do you have any idea how many trees there are over 12 inches, rest of them?
No, I do not.
We went to the site visit in the fall and there's, I mean, there's some trees. Wait, can I just clarify one thing just for the public listening because you mentioned hoping to get an approval. Just to kind of go over like the timeline of the planning board process, we haven't done seeker or anything on this yet, so we're still at the beginning of this process, just so everyone knows. Because I know, you know, there has been a lot of discussion about this project and the petition and that kind of thing, so, I mean, we still have, you know, nothing's going to happen right away, just in case anyone's like, approval, then that, you know, freaks people out. We're still discussing. That's it. Public service note, done.
Well, I hope every time that I come here, you do make headway towards getting that approval, so.
Yeah, exactly.
That's, that's, that's what I, that's what I had meant by that statement, so, okay. Some of the other items that we'd like to go over tonight, last, last month, there was a request about trying to figure out the filling on the project and how many trucks that would be, how, in approximate period, how long that we take to do, and we have to move some numbers on that, so.
So, based on the site plan package that everyone has, that's the latest plans, we're looking, as I mentioned, to fill, raise the site quite a bit, looking at about 33,000 cubic yards. So, if you took that from a tri-axle dump truck, carry about 20 yards, then it's as a payload, you'd be looking at about 16, 100, 1,650 trucks. Now, assuming, depending on where they're transporting the fill material from or whatnot, if you got 30 in a day, say, you're looking at about a two-month period. Give or take, you know, depending on the weather, if there's, you know, rainy weather during that, it's not optimum time to be setting fill and, you know, be placing it in lifts and compacting it and whatnot to certain specifications, so if, you know, there is some mother nature effects that, you know, could prolong.
The question that brings to mind is, where's it coming from, what route is, what trucks can be, came to the site?
Well, the applicant is looking at, at various locations to bring the fill in, so depending on what he can, can secure. Like I said at the last meeting, we're not looking to have construction access off of 299. We'd be coming in and trying to utilize the existing driveway that's out there to, off the north putt, to bring the trucks in, you know, once things are cleared. So, most likely either the south or the east, I would say. But again, all accessing the site via north putt.
And the idea about the truck traffic for the filling during that two-month period is so that, you know, we'd be able to control the timing when the trucks came, so obviously you wouldn't have the deliveries come during rush hour, either the AM or PM rush hour, so you'd be able to control that.
Actually, our rush hour is the most critical, I think, is the school bus hours.
The school bus hours.
School bus hours, where it starts around 2:45, 3:00, 4:00. School buses create the traffic that builds to it, when people get in and out.
And typically, you find that, you know, the drivers that are bringing the material, they don't want to be involved and tied up either, so you usually get a high degree of cooperation about, you know, the schedule of deliveries at a off-peak kind of time.
How long does it take to actually drop a little? Do whatever you have to do the next one time?
From, as soon as they pull onto the site, onto the site?
Well, how much, I'm trying to figure out how much time there are going to be trucks coming in and out, if they move as expeditiously as possible? It's like half an hour, 20 minutes?
Yeah, I'd say, I'd say, you know, 20 minutes at the, at the most.
At the most.
You know? I mean, once it's, because if you envision, I mean, once it's clear, we're going to have an open pad where we can have a clear truck route onsite dump, they have excavation that are going to bulldoze equipment onsite to maneuver the mounds of...
You're spreading, rolling, testing, so it's, it's not going to happen, the truck won't be the remaining factor.
Right.
No, because...
Well, just if it's, if it's, for example, 20 minutes on average, that's three trucks an hour, it's 10 hours worth of truck in and out stuff if they're moving on clock. So, this is something where you might have the traffic for, for like half a day. What time will you start, 7:00 coming morning or will it be started at 7:00?
Yeah, most of the, uh, 7:00. Unless the town has specific construction hours that...
What the town typically does is, develops an agreement that will make provision for hours operation, police, the police are required to control traffic and the details, how to make this work in a reasonable way for the applicant and for the public. And that will include modifications of proof necessary. 3 o'clock is a big problem, you know, not to be delivering. But that being so, we haven't had our homes at the hotel, right? To my knowledge. Except for the guy who parked in the driveway when they're trying to get the concrete truck.
Now, I know Dave, on March 3rd, you had a memo talking about, well, are you guys still proposing what additional pavement and what's required by the code?
Yeah, two spaces. That's, that's what we're looking at. Yeah, the code, so, and that's just in, in response to the CBS parking calculations, based on the square footage. The town requires 67, we're proposing 69 parking spaces, so just two over the code. And again, that, that was driven by the user, that's the minimum that they are looking for, for a building of that size.
Well, you're talking about building that size. How do you, we had this discussion in the beginning of what you're proposing. How did you determine the size of the building? In my travels for work, I go around seeing towns, you're building stores in towns similar to our size, they look to be smaller than the New Paltz one. How would you, I mean, Glenmark, Glenmont, you're building a new store, Hyde Park, you have one, and they are smaller than what's in New Paltz. How did you come up with the, the idea that you need this huge store where the other townships are using a smaller store?
It was, I mean, it's driven by CBS corporate and their business model. A lot of it's based on traffic volumes, you know, here at the, we're on major highways, New York State highways and the county highway there, so volumes are attributed to what they feel the community can support. I don't have those exact numbers, it, that's what you were looking for, like the driving force of the size of the building from CBS, I could definitely get that from them to...
Because the traffic in New Paltz is, traffic can be heavier due to the college. You have a lot of coming in and going out quickly.
Sure.
Whereas the other towns, Hyde Park or wherever, they have a more constant traffic flow of, you know, sales, it's going to stop and you're still, that's just, that has a relationship to it. You know, that, that may be to your detriment as well.
Well, I, I think, you know, bottom line, bottom, it's a, we're not privy to the, you know, what the formulas are that CBS uses for it. They're basing the size of the store on, you know, on their calculations of what they think they can make a profit, you know, in the store. They're not going to build the store so it'd be too big and fail, so. And it probably does have to do with demographics and population and that, so.
Good on plan. One thing that would be useful, I think, is to confirm with whoever it is. We don't, obviously, we're not asking for the trade secrets, but if you can confirm that they have taken into account the other resources that are already in the town, so they're not operating on the assumption this is one drugstore town kind of thing.
All I'm saying is, this thing's been brought up at every single meeting, so maybe it would be worth discussing it with the CBS higher-ups, that perhaps they could, you know, change their formulas, look at it again, take into account the four other pharmacies in town, yeah, I mean...
Well, let me say this, we'll ask and see what information we can get from them. I don't know why it's really germane, because we're not asking for any, any variances for the project. The size of the building is a loud by the code. I think as we discuss a little more the traffic, studies show that it's not an over, you know, variant project in the traffic, part of you, so...
I think what we would say is the community character aspect of it.
I think we also worry about becoming like Hyde Park or something with abandoned stores.
Which we already have in town.
Well, we don't have a lot of, we don't have a lot of abandoned big box stores right now, but we're winning. You see around different towns, it's not uncommon for stores to be built that four or five, 10 years down the road, will go up to the potential, people relocate to another corner and leave that building there. I guess it's the, the other shopping center is, is a lot of vacancies, right? I mean, not that they're, I'm not saying they're suitable for your needs or anything. You're saying that, that we have had that experience in the past of, of stores being vacant for long periods of time and it's a domino effect.
And what I could say, I was like, we could ask, I don't know how much information, though it'll be forthcoming, you know, but perhaps there are some, you know, there's some key factors they can, they can report on, you know, that, it does come down to, you know, not that, you know, it's not a national security secret, but there are certain, certain business models that, you know, they're not going to want to disclose too, too much about, but we'll, we'll ask them.
Sometimes you feel like a store should be bonded and have a demolition bond, so when you're done with it, we have the money to tear it down and get rid of it, you know?
I guess the next thing I want to talk about, when we were here last month, there was, we had presented the board with some architectural renderings of, of the buildings. We have been over the CBS one quite a bit before, and we had given some of the, on the addition of the Five Guys, and we were looking for some feedback on that. One of the things we are moving towards is putting together a full simulation of the intersection, whatever it looks like.
The one particular difference from CBS is that there's some more windows on the southeast and west sides of this building. They're going with a stone veneer, the darker accents there are stone veneer, and then the lighter beige color there is like a brick stucco type finish on there, and then the upper cornice to kind of finish off the top of the building. Both the buildings are one-story. The CBS building's 22 feet 4 inches, the Five Guys is 21 inches, so we're, we're well below the 40-foot maximum that's permitted in the zone, and three stories is the maximum, so we're only a third of that as well. The Five Guys also does have those awnings over the front and eastern and western sides there to cover the access points. In both scenarios, on our landscape plan, we did show on the eastern elevation of CBS, we have some trellises that we added to the facade as well as a landscaped island all along the eastern perimeter of the CBS building, where we have varied heights, evergreens, we have climbing hydrangea, we have other various shrubs in that plan out to kind of soften the massing of the building, and we're also looking to do a similar effect on the east side of the building for, for Five Guys as well. Again, just to kind of soften the mass of those sides of the, the structure.
This is the building you're going to see when you come to New Paltz, so, I mean, you really need to do something that, that east side especially, it looks...
It's so cookie cutter.
I don't know how you can see it, I'd like to see a photo of one that looks like that. Do we get something that you, that they already have that looks like that? I don't know what...
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can see if they have it. A lot of Five Guys applications are actually in, it's a, it's not a standalone building. Most of them are within development, they're in, but I could see what we could put together of, of something similar of nature.
Okay. How many locations do they have around here?
The closest here, there's one up in Kingston, and there's also one down in New Brook, Pomelo Farms, which is in that development, retail development, they're on 300, yeah, 317K.
There's one right across from Art Block.
There's one in Fishville.
One in Fishville, I'm going to stare back at it. Lights don't be here.
So, is that, is that Meastre or...
Oh, it's Meastre.
So, all the other ones are, you know, kind of strip malls or, I mean, I know that one, Kingston is totally in a, you know, retail world, and this is...
And I think, yeah, I would think that Kingston one from a facade standpoint, I don't want to, this one's much different than that.
Yeah.
I don't think I've ever seen one.
Do they have a website, like, that shows locations?
Sure. And we definitely have a location. I'm sure it has photographs that would be, but I can...
Well, I guess the real question is, do they respond to local, kind of their architecture flavor? For example, if you look at the mobile station, across from the throughway entrance, that was the product of a fair amount of architectural review with the planning board.
Are you talking about Five Guys? Yeah, I have Google image search. Now we have Wi-Fi in town hall.
Same thing.
I mean, it looks pretty cultureless and flavorless and totally un-New Paltesian, completely bland and pretty tiki-tacky, just like a box with hamburgers. There we are.
We will be applying the most sign codes, so that'll make it...
Yeah, that's true.
The thing is, the board has looked at applications like Ulster Savings, the mobile station fairly recently, and they've looked at it from a standpoint of integrating some aspects of local architectural flavor into it that are... I'm not seeing any of those aspects in this one. So I guess the question to put to the applicant or to Five Guys is whether they want to consider a modification that would be more...
I think there would be, is there anything in particular that the board is looking for?
The actual board, I don't know.
Well, is that a fair statement if you look at Ulster Savings, you look at the mobile?
They have culture installed, which is some of what we're doing on these two buildings. But if there's other treatments, maybe that the board's looking for, if you could just give us some guidance, so I can take it back to the...
More lines, but I mean, just if you look at Ulster Savings, it's not a box.
Yeah.
Something of architecture that goes in with the community.
Something that breaks up the...
Yeah, you'd think they have architects who could, you know, yeah.
He's not buying an architect.
Yeah, I mean, it might be worth bringing, you know, well, I know you know town.
Yeah.
Looking around. Maybe something like Huguenot Street, like a three-hundred-year-old stone house.
So I think we don't want something...
There's some variation.
We don't want something that looks like it's going to be gone in ten years or something. We want something that looks like it's a little bit more permanent.
And been there.
I hope it isn't, but, I mean, just kidding. Where would the exhaust stacks be for the cooking?
Only improvements on the roof. It does have a parapet.
How high?
We could get those added onto the plan if you want to see where the actual roof line was compared to the parapet height. But you're probably looking around three feet or so.
You can see these cupboards there.
Yeah.
So that would be a little...
Yeah, exactly.
Is there any...
We could get...
Is there any, well, I guess the two things that I normally hear when people look at, first off, and Shapur was concerned because there was a new shed and the question was where would the HVAC seats let be on the roof? Because you can look down and see things. If you drive past, you can... I think the conclusion was it's far enough away that there's not, you see everyone back. It's only screen. But this will be a little bit closer to the road. You might want to look and see what kind of view will exist because of that for whatever's going to be on the roof. But the other thing with something like a burger place is you get cooking thoughts. And in some cases, that can be troubling for neighboring properties. Some cases, it can just reduce more traffic to the site. So I guess the question...
You're surrounded by roadways here.
Well, you're surrounded, you're in the middle of a parking lot, too. So, I mean, it's, you know, you don't necessarily want stuff blowing around on the site. I'm just curious to know how the food odors are being treated, if they are, whether exhaust that you, if it's still... If it's going over the throughway, people will still have enough time to pull over before. Just a general question, what's happening to the corner?
I guess we got the experience of Burger King, which I think they put a burger on and just burned it to... Burned that smell out there.
I just have a question about the traffic. I'm just, I'm just trying to know that the traffic studies show that, that that corner can handle this. But my, I'm wondering, I just want to talk about the entrances and the exits. So you're going to have an entrance on two ninety-nine?
Yes.
And an entrance and an exit on North Putt. And what is that going to do to yield sign, you know, there's a yield one? Yeah.
Does this turn off off of two ninety-nine?
Yeah.
So, yeah, we, that was actually discussed the last time we were here. That yield is actually going to, as part of this project, the yield is going to go away. And the right turn would be under the signal control. So you would have to actually stop at the traffic signal and you would have an overlap phase for when people are coming off of North Putt Corners, making a left turn. You'd also be able to make a right turn onto North Putt Corners from two ninety-nine, but that yield control is going to, will be on. And that, part of that is to accommodate the site traffic, but also to accommodate pedestrians at the intersection. Because we're going to put pedestrian, we could probably show it to you on the plane.
And the size of the road is going to stay?
Yes. Not going to widen the road. There's already a right turn lane here. This is where the channelization island is now. It's going to go away so that we can put this crosswalk in to provide, and it'll be a signalized pedestrian crosswalk. And then, like I said, this will be under the signal control and...
There'll be a turn.
So when people are making left turns off of North Putt Corners, you'll also be able to make the right turn onto North Putt Corners.
And the center lane would be used for traffic coming through town?
Correct. Just like it is today.
Unless, unless you have pedestrian crossing, it'll be all stopped.
Yes, yeah. Well, we'll have to determine how, exactly how it's phased.
People can't be making a left turn into a crosswalk.
Right. No, it will not, not when you're making a left turn. It could potentially be when the through movements are going, but under the left turn signal, the dedicated left turn signal, there will be not, will not be any crossing at that time. So it could potentially be that all, all four approaches are stopped from crossing, or it could happen when the through movements are going. It depends on how DOT wants it to be.
Right, yield, I mean, does help traffic move along.
I'm going to visit.
What?
I'm going to visit.
No, I think, I mean, I think it's a big deal that that's going away.
Well, the, actually, the capacity analysis will show, or shows in the study that the overlap phase more than accommodates the, the traffic that, making that right turn.
You know, I'm going to put it over.
And it'll, at the same time, there's also the ability to make a right turn on red at that intersection, from that approach. So between that and the overlap phase and also going on the regular green, there's more than enough time to accommodate the right turn on that intersection, so.
So you would be able to make a left turn on red?
Yes.
Do you have D O T?
Well, we'll have to, again, we'll have to review the D O T, but as of right now.
Because what happens when you want to make a right turn?
It'll be part of the highway work permit. We'll get into that with D O T, so. We haven't gotten that till yet.
On the entrance and the exit on North Putt, is there an option to make a left-hand turn coming out of that?
Out of the site?
Out of the site.
Yes.
Now, how are you going to facilitate getting that traffic out on that left-hand turn?
So part of what we're doing with the signal will also be adjusting the timings slightly to allow more green time to make the left-hand turn off of North Putt Corners onto two ninety-nine. So that, to reduce the queues, will allow, should allow left turns off of, out of the site.
Because what I, what I'm envisioning is somebody coming out of that lot and seeing, and seeing that the left-hand, they cannot make a left-hand turn, they're going to make a right and increase traffic down Henry W.
I mean, I guess that's potentially possible at peak times, but, like I said, the idea is to increase the green time on that southbound approach to allow, to reduce those queues so that you can make a left turn out of the site from that location.
How do they figure that out? So if you have ten cars in a queue, how long does that left-hand turn arrow have to be on?
If you have ten cars in the queue...
Yeah, I mean, there's frequently ten cars in a queue there to make a left-hand turn. There's more, there are more cars frequently than there is space in the left turn.
Yes. It's approximately two seconds per vehicle. So, you know, if there's ten cars, it's about twenty seconds. I don't, off the top of my head, I don't remember what the exact timing is of that, that phase today. But I, it's in the study, and we could get, we could get it for you.
To me, that sounds like typically, you know, it's three-quarters of a second between the time you think about moving your foot to the gas and you move your foot to the gas, you've already lost like almost one of those two seconds and to get...
Well, yeah, I mean, that's...
And then if you have a pedestrian crossing or, you know, crossing against the light, I mean, you know, it's a, it's a serious problem already. We're just wondering how it's going to, how it's going to work.
No, I understand. And like I said, it's, the capacity analysis in the report shows that increasing that green time will reduce the queues. And, I mean, that's what we're proposing to do. So it, it shows that it'll...
Increase that? Not to belabor the point, but if you can, if you increase that, then everybody else is waiting, right?
Yes, but I mean, it's a matter of a couple of seconds, so it doesn't really impact the rest of the approaches.
Okay, but now, or is that going to be extended to three lanes wide?
On two ninety-nine? I mean, on North Putt Farms?
Yes. Okay, now have you taken into the effect that you have rescue squad and you have the fire department coming up that way? Either making a right-hand turn into town or making a left-hand turn onto, onto two ninety-nine? Is there enough room for the cars to pour down, so the emergency equipment can get out? Because rescue runs quite a few calls up through that, in order to get out onto the main highways.
Yeah, it's...
It would operate no different than how they would do it today.
Right.
Well, right now, they have, what happens right now is they've got a very, very fine area to get up through with traffic. So they have an issue, I believe now, and I, it's, you know, if you're having an increase in the traffic and going to be backing it up possibly more, I think you've got to take into account of some way of figuring a way out that way as well.
No, I understand your, I think we were just trying to convey is that the improvements that we're looking to do at the intersection, the light and the turning motions and things like that will not impede it from what's, how it operates today.
Except there's going to be more traffic at that, at those corners.
There, there will be, there will be more traffic at the corner, but the, the analysis, or what we're trying to do is to make, to get, basically to offset our impacts. But, but the idea is that the queues and on North Putt Corners are going to be no different than what they are today. So that's, I mean, I understand you're saying that there, there may be an issue today, but the idea is that those issues won't change based on the project after we make our improvements.
It's not just, our study was reviewed by the planning board's traffic consultant and is agreeing with the conclusion, so.
What may be helpful is if we invite the traffic, your traffic engineer to the next meeting? So that he can discuss the conclusions he's drawn, answer the questions you have. And at that point, we either need further study or we can proceed forward with consideration of the environmental impact.
And one thing to point out, too, is that the, Mr. Clausard asked us to also include in the study, like the Wildberry Lodge, Hampton Inn, like all these other, a few other developments that are not up and running, one's starting construction, as you know. So we've also gone to the, to lengthy include that into the study to try to really capture what, what's going to happen at this intersection when all these projects come to fruition.
And also, we had received some comments from DOT initially, and that was, that is what determined our growth period, which we went out five years to twenty nineteen. And we increased traffic at one percent per year on top of the fact that we included the Wildberry Lodge and the Hampton Inn and the Mohawk project that I can't think of the name of right now. Yes, exactly. So we included traffic for all three of those projects plus a growth rate of one percent per year on top of our existing traffic. So we're more than accounting for what the future traffic launch would be. And if you look at the letter that, from your traffic engineer, he basically says, and we agree with him, that our, our estimates of the traffic that the site will generate are fairly conservative. We only considered about fifty, we considered a fifteen percent pass-by on the Five Guys, which basically means that we're attracting about fifteen percent of our traffic from existing traffic on the roadway. In reality, that's probably going to be much higher, based on standard data that we use all the time. It could be as high as fifty percent of the traffic coming from existing traffic on the roadway, which means fifty percent of the traffic that's generated by that site is already on the road. So we're not really generating that as new traffic on the roadway.
You're creating an impact because instead of driving through the intersection, you're going and driving...
No, understood. And that's why we're making the changes that we're making and to mitigate those impacts. But it's not necessarily completely new to the roadway.
Good question about the traffic studies, just because I haven't read a ton of traffic studies in my day. This says, the results of this analysis indicate the intersection is currently operating at a level of service C or better during each of the peak hours. And it says with the no build or build traffic volumes, it'll continue to experience a level of service D or better. Is that just a standard A, B, C, D, E, F scale?
Yes, and it's in the study, it's in the study also what that scale is.
Okay.
There's like, there's cutoffs, so level of service C goes from twenty seconds delay to thirty-five seconds delay. And D is from thirty-five to fifty-five, I believe. But that's also, the cutoff for that is, and it's an average, it's an average delay per vehicle at the intersection.
So basically, it's that it's going to get worse whether you build or not is the result of the traffic.
Level, wait, sorry. Level service C and D are not considered bad. That's...
Oh, okay. All right, I guess that's why I got the question. If I got a D in school, I'd be like, yeah, okay.
Level service, like, C and D are basically average, what you experience every day. Level service...
All traffic is bad.
Level service E and F are worse conditions and we try to mitigate away from that.
Gotcha. All right, cool. Great, great.
What other intersections do you look at? Did it go up to thirty-two?
Up to, no, we did not go up to thirty-two. We just looked, we just looked at our two access connections, two ninety-nine and North Putt and Henry W. DeBois. Those other, so those other intersections, the amount of traffic out that we're adding to those intersections at that point, it reduces because it's obviously spreading across the traffic network now. The percentage increase that we're adding to those intersections is not significant, basically. So that's why we didn't go ahead and study those intersections.
I was just thinking because sometimes you leave, it's soon at noon and you can't make a right turn onto two ninety-nine because it's backed up all the way to the next two lights, you know.
Right. Yeah, I mean, we're also doing a study for, for the Wildberry Lodge project and we haven't completed it yet. But that study will be studying those intersections and that study will also include the traffic for this project also. So you'll see a full complete study as part of that. But as far as our project alone, we're not really impacting those intersections, so.
What happens if you put the construction traffic?
Sorry?
What happens when you put the construction traffic into that mix, recognizing it's two months, three months?
Well, yeah, it's a short duration, but it's also, like we said before, three trucks per hour, maybe, right? So even if it's six trucks per hour, it's really not a significant amount of traffic that we're adding to the intersection. And we're not adding it on top... And we're not adding it on top of all this other growth and other projects that we've analyzed. So it shouldn't really be an impact. And it also depends on where it's coming from, so without knowing that, it's kinda hard to predict exactly what's gonna happen.
Well, I guess the question I have is if you did have three trucks in an hour and were going, for example, on the left-turning movement, does that impact that intersection in a way which is more than would be expected from just one truck? So like a sensitivity analysis?
Yeah, I mean, and we can certainly run that.
Would there be traffic around that particular movement?
I mean, that's a pretty simple analysis for us to run. But I, it's likely that it won't show much of an impact at all. The percentage of trucks on that movement is something that we would account for. And it certainly could show some impact, but it may be in the tenths of a second of additional delay. But it's also something, you know, like as we talked about before, why you may limit the times of deliveries, so. You know, at, 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 at like eleven o'clock in the morning, it may not be as bad as, at two-thirty, three o'clock in the afternoon when school buses are coming, when there's additional heavy vehicle traffic on the roadway.
If you decide to use trailer dumps instead of tri-axles and, and a trailer dump that's as long as four cars?
Right. I mean-
In that case too, it would also reduce the, the amount of trucks that we would need.
That's true.
So, so do, I'm hearing that you'd like us to do an analysis to show what the, what the temporary effects of the truck traffic would be for the, for the-
Except I'm not sure this is like a traffic study kind of analysis based on an average. It's more like whether something's problematic or you can't, one truck stuck out there through two movements or three movements of the light or something.
That's traffic, that's not mentioned.
Well, it is, it's really looking at, at the worst case scenario. It's different than just saying overall increased daily traffic by one second. About all stacking in fifteen minutes and we need to figure out maybe they have to go north instead of having the option to go south. I mean, that's, to me is what I see as the major issue with the, with construction traffic is putting them into that south movement on the lights changing inside from the center. They don't make it through that the first time, it's been backed up and nothing will just happen.
Yeah.
And that's not something where you can really study and say, okay, it's only gonna happen one day and thirty or whatever.
Right.
But you, you can do, if you can do an analysis that shows how those truck movements would affect the capacity and the workings of the intersection, you know?
You could do it, yeah, you could do that single movement. But I guess this is something which I would suggest. When the worst consultants here discuss these concerns of that kind with them, he can tell you what options exist for the, that he believes would be suitable to evaluate the impact. And then you can decide what, if anything else, you would require him to advocate. I think the other question would be, at what point do they change the traffic controls after it's built or before it's built? You know, so, so we're gonna be dealing with the construction traffic, trucks and things like that under an existing timing versus and are there temporary modifications they can make to the timing to minimize? You know, it's about perception. When people are sitting there and they have trucks waiting in front of them or in back of them, they're not gonna think that, oh, this is any shorter than it was before. They're gonna think this is horrible. That's, that's how they're gonna feel.
Let me ask you something. Would the ponds are much more substantial development than what we're looking at? No, I'm just, no, I'm just pointing out, you know, I mean, obviously just, you know, truck traffic and things like that, we're coming to this same intersection unless did the board route the trap, them north on seventeen? I, I don't know the specifics of, you know, the developer's agreement that was down there, but I just wanna-
No, it's clear.
Make sure they balanced the site, there wasn't a lot of cut going off or built coming in.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I, I, I wouldn't wanna lose a whole month to have the gentleman from Creighton, Creighton-Manningan is coming here next month. Can we, in the assuming timeframe, make suggestions as to what this, what this analysis would look like? And get that, get that to your consultants so at least they have an idea what we're thinking about?
You're responding to Ken's memo also, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
And that wasn't, that wasn't a comment he was throwing.
No. But it wasn't a comment that Ken brought up, but I, you know, I see that's a legitimate comment, right? How, how is that gonna affect whether it's two months, three months or whatever, so.
I mean, respond with that memo on that, I think.
On that, okay.
Get it right to him. The DOT is also looking at this. We sent them the latest plans and evidently they're interested because they wanted a CD that we're passing it around the department. It's a popular project, right? And hopefully hear from us. Well, I think this is a public comment, an issue of concern and you might need to focus on getting the best possible answers. And making sure that whatever, what I think would be really bad is if you go through and do one thing one last the DOT comes along and says, oh, we think we should change this part here.
Well, the, the, let's, let's declare that the conceptual plan we have for modifying the intersection for the operation of the site has been, we're not, it's, it's been discussed with DOT, yeah, it's been discussed in the south. They're not, they're not seeing that, hearing that on the first time.
Sure. So the other thing I would suggest is if the board does have any other concerns that come to mind, maybe route it through Dave and get him to Ken Worsted, so he'll have a chance to think about things before he comes and talks to you. I suppose, like I said, you guys have questions that would also be-
Well, I think that's what we'll do in responding to his memo. We'll, we'll make a suggestion about how we think this I'll call it, you know, the construction traffic can be assessed and see if he's agree with that and that, so.
What is your timeframe for, your most optimistic timeframe for filming this and what do you want?
We, we, we'd like to be in construction this, this summer.
And how long would it be?
And how long would your construction be?
Well, I mean, estimating, just to give break in, you know, we're in two-month, two-month range and then probably eight months or so to get out of the ground. And we have septic wells that we need to, to work on as well, so.
So you'd be looking like for a spray opening or something? Or you'll anticipate you get-
I mean, this is-
I mean, you're gonna reach a point where you'd have to pay, where you, you'd have to wait for it.
I'm sorry?
You'd get to a point where you'd have, you'd have to pay with like bill and number or something?
When they start closing, yeah. I mean, obviously we'd love to be in a position where that, that we get to the plants before, before they close, so.
So it would take three months before you can get to a point where you could pay because you have-
Sure, they will, exactly.
-filling and so on.
Yeah, exactly.
So that's August. What else do you have for us?
Uh, there, there was a review letter that came back from the county planning department, but planning board, I don't know if the board guys have seen that or not yet.
I don't think we actually got that. So if you could provide a copy, well, I guess you can get it tomorrow, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, okay, I, but we have it. They had, they had emailed it down here, but they didn't get it. So, okay. All right, then I guess we can discuss it if we, if we-
Well, you can tell us what it says and when we get it, we'll see if you told us truth.
We told the truth, I only speak the truth, George, only speak the truth. Well-
Are there issues that you would like to discuss with the board, I guess is the question? Or are you just going to do what they recommend?
I think most of the issues mirror some of the concerns the board has.
Yeah.
It, it's, they talked about the idea of, you know, the site needs to be able to provide access for pedestrians. It can't conflict with the county's plan for a trail to run through this. That, that's, and I, we think the plans already cover that. They talked about the idea of the aesthetics of the project. And, yeah, remind the board, the board should take a look at the aesthetics of the project because of where it is and the gateways are.
Yeah, they, they also mentioned the softening the building, the facade of the building, especially on the east side. So I think that's, they mirror something that you spoke about. They recognize the need for health department approval for the wells and the septics on, on site. One thing that they were looking for with our access onto North Putt, being that the potential trail connection is coming through there, they were looking for the addition of a median in between the entrance and exit lanes so that someone coming across there would have some relief depending on what traffic is coming in and out of the site. They were able to stop there in a safe area so that either coming or exit-
On North Putt?
On, yeah, on our driveway. So have a small median there to, to-
Yeah, you're rather than having three lanes across on the driveway to have a median in the middle so that the entrances and the exit lanes were, were separated. I think that is something we could, we could accommodate on the site, so.
And then, and then what would you do? Have one lane on either side?
Well, you'd probably have one lane coming, even two lanes going, going out.
Have two lanes going out.
Yeah, we wanna keep the, the motions that we have for the same, just be adding a, a median there for a portion. They also, for the follow simulation. So as we, as we mentioned, we are working on, on putting that together. Landscaping, they wanted to see some more street trees to define the edge of the property along the eastern edge. We did, our plan does call for some evergreen trees along that side up towards the front of the 299 frontage and extending basically to where the, the building is. So, so there is some area behind that too that we could look for additional plantings if that's, you know, something the board was, was looking for as well. There is going to be an existing vegetated buffer that, that will be retained along that side just for the simple fact that it's in the throughway right of way, we can't touch it. So there, there will be some, you know, varying depth, twenty feet to thirty feet or so that will be retained off our site, but we are proposing some on our site as well. Yeah, I think that's, that summarizes what we're, I can leave a copy of this with, I think it's a few.
Yeah. Would you say there were three wages that you are interested in? The charging station, the trees and something else?
Oh, then, then, oh yes, I did, I did, because it was the third issue about, just trying to understand the procedure with the board about this is a site plan approval and about whether the board is going to require a public hearing on our site plans. I, I didn't see anything in the code that, that normally-
It's optional.
It's optional.
It's optional. You have done it, for example, with Hampton Inn because there was public interest. And I can't remember another site plan in recent, but there haven't been that many. Site plans. As it's possible, we probably should include it just because- There's, there's a lot of public interest.
Well, we, we did have a public hearing with the zoning board and there, there were, there were people that came, it wasn't, you know, it wasn't hundreds, you know?
Some of them will be the same.
Okay.
I think we should schedule it now. I think you could consider whether you wanna schedule it now or wait until the plans. I mean, basically it's a question of do you want to present these plans to the public, invite them to comment on it? Or is there some development that will happen that you think might, are waiting until that? Because if they're gonna change a plan that interests issues the public will have, the public hearing isn't really that constructive. So I guess-
I have feeling the plans aren't gonna change significantly enough to change.
I mean, for example, if the architectural treatment of the buildings will change-
Yeah.
In a way that people might feel is more coherent with the-
Yeah.
That might be something you wanna wait for, but if not, you might wanna go with this too. It's basically- I'd like to hear from the DOT on this. Ken, I mean, traffic is really a big issue here. I wanna make sure it's, well, we're another ten down. They've had it now three weeks.
I believe the reviewer over there was, has been away a little bit. She was just getting back in the things. So I would hope we see things building soon.
So maybe the next meeting we could both go outside, have more information from you. And then if we have that meeting scheduled, public hearing for the site?
Well, next meeting, maybe the first weekend later.
Correct.
I think we, I think that's too soon. Schedule a public hearing for the first weekend. I mean, do you guys have any possibility of generating some architectural rendering or something?
By the beginning of that year.
Something that might be more powerful.
Well, I, I guess if, if it's the board's opinion setting it today that no matter what, you're gonna wanna have a public hearing on the project.
You do.
I'd rather have the hearing sooner than, than later. And the, the reason being that if there is, there is comments that would affect the design of the project, I'd rather know them, I'd rather know them now than, than, you know, finalize the design and then find out, you know, someone has a, a major concern that, you know, affects the design of the project, so.
So the first meeting in May is May eleventh?
Yeah.
And that will allow you time to submit any revised plans that you want the board to consider. Allow opportunity for discussion with the traffic consultant if he could even come to a meet, to the April meeting if that was something that you thought would be helpful or he could come to the May, May public hearing. He would have the opportunity to hear public concerns as well as the public would have opportunity to hear his analysis. Kelly, what's her mail address? Call him at night.
I just said right now, we'll have the building's public hearing. So we could do it on the twenty-seventh, maybe that's too soon.
The public hearing?
I know we'll call on the twenty-seventh. I mean, so far I haven't- Just the mission I'd like to be doing is try to-
Second meeting, word, word show. Maybe you can give him the different help on the seventeen. That's who he's been talking to. Second meeting, word, word show. That's who he's been talking to.
It's more, we haven't done that.
The building.
Is that the one we could move to the twenty-fifth?
At least for my interest.
Well, yeah, I can't find that many, but whatever. But the next one will be the twenty-fifth and that's up.
Yeah, we're not having any. So when we put one calendar for May eleventh and then when Mike gets back, you know, if he has some reason to, he thinks it's too soon and too much, then we could-
May eleventh for the, for a public hearing.
Okay. So I'll advertise that. That goes for two, two, three days or two weeks? How much is we have to put forward?
Ten days. And did I hear something about having the traffic consultant come on the twenty-seventh of, of this month to discuss?
That would be an option the board could consider if you want to have your conversation with the consultant and then you would go on to the public hearing and he could be at that meeting as well if you wish, or? I think it would be a good idea to educate us first before-
Before, before the hearing, yeah.
To convince us.
What might actually make sense is not so much just focused on CBS, but he's also looking, as you will be looking at, Wildberry, CBS, Mohawk and the general, they've been looking at traffic for the last 20 years or so. This will be the latest round, but it may be helpful to give this board a technical review.
So then 27th is not being, you need us to attend, or?
Don't think so. You'll get the minutes, you'll only get the minutes, but the object would be to get the information to you in a way that, I mean, Ken will probably be charged with, you know, addressing this or asking this, but I think it probably would not be necessary.
I'm not saying we wouldn't come, I mean, if you think you want us here, that's fine, so.
Well, maybe it's something we should, you know, Dave can discuss with Ken and see if he believes it would be, what he believes would be most appropriate.
I'll make it in person.
Yeah, I think there's just one other point, um, Dave, in your memo there on the EAF, it's, there was, your first point said, uh, that the site is within the 100 foot adjacent area for the DDC wells, that CD 39.
I didn't know if that was true or not, it shows on GIS that it may be.
We, we applied, you know, off, off the map, um, where that CD 39 lies and we're, we're well over 100 feet, I mean, 100 feet doesn't even get you to North Putt.
Really?
Yeah, so I mean, we could, we could impose that on, on a map in our response.
What did you have, I mean, you were using just the DDC's web map there?
Yeah, you used the, uh, the mapper, um, and brought that into the, to the plan and did the 100 foot offset.
Okay. I, I need to look at that, I thought it was closer than that, because that still boos you.
Okay. I know, um, my office will be talking to you on Friday about some of the store order comments, so maybe we could just touch on that again.
Okay. So we also have to look, because the DC boundary may be at one location, but there is a web map in there. It's also subject to the town, so check to be sure. So whatever's there doesn't get reflected.
Awesome.
I didn't mean it to do that.
All right, so we will, um, we'll, we'll work on the architecturals for, for the five guys. See how much of that we can get done in time for the, a meeting on May 11th for public hearing and, uh, we'll wait to hear back about the 27th, when we need to have our traffic consultant here. All right.
Thank you.
I guess thank you.
Any motion to set a public hearing, hey?
Oh, yeah. There's a motion to set a public hearing for May 11th. So I have a motion. Second it, I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second, all in paper. Soon does a public hearing.
No, it just seems so soon for a public hearing.
Right. Top, it's not when you open the public hearing, it's when you propose it.
Yes.
Now we are at the administrative section.
Yeah.
Do it well.
Yeah, I'm so excited.
So...
For a public...
I mean, we can have multiple papers, but it just seems like nothing is ready. Yeah, yes, look it up and have a look. You're great. Well, I don't know.
Okay, this is the administrative section, so the, so we, this is administrative.